Item number two is visitors. Are there any visitors that would like to be recognized at this time? Any visitors would like to be recognized? Okay, here and done. We'll move on to the item number three, which is the approval of the minutes from the December fifteenth, 2021 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
I would like it if you would consider putting my comments in regarding Jane Scully Welch and the Light Committee.
Part of the minute?
Yes, please.
Can I just, can I say something about that?
Of course.
Normally, conversation isn't recorded in minutes like that. Like, do you recall my questions for Alan Sammet? That didn't go in the minutes. Things that are personally based, those kind of, minutes are meant to be boring, is what the bottom line is. Generally, discussion such as that is secondary to the, to the motion and its discussion. I mean, and its eventual outcome. I just want you to think about how, when I talk to Alan Sammet, that doesn't go in the minutes either. And that gives you a freedom to converse here that doesn't go on the permanent record. You might want to think about that.
I'll think about that. I'd also definitely like you to not consider them personal comments, but comments that are relevant to-
Exactly. Exactly. That's how I felt about, about, yeah.
Issue becomes that it's more logistically on how, you know, how do we do minutes then? Because if you're indicating you'd like your comments included into the minutes of a meeting, then we would have to open that up to everybody. So then, how does a, you know, clerk or somebody that's taking minutes in any meeting, then how do they determine, well, are we supposed to announce that we would like our comments put on record prior to doing it? And then, so it's a very difficult process.
I understand. So, in that case, because Dennis' comments were in there regarding the young man who is going to be put on Conservation Committee, maybe those will be removed.
If you'd like to make a motion to have those written, then we can do that as well?
I mean, apples, apples.
I understand, but it's also, so, I mean, if you would like a motion that you would like your comments to be included, so then it would be, you want Mary to go back to the meeting that we had?
Whatever.
Again, we're recorded. Again, we're recorded, and we're also videotaped. So your, the comments that you make in any public meeting are public.
Whatever we think is best. If we all agree that no comments be in there, then I agree.
And then, considering the fact that we're live, and we're taped, and we're doing everything, minutes should really be simply who made the motion, and who seconded, and what was the outcome.
Any other discussion?
I could see it both ways.
We have the, we have first and a second?
Yes.
Okay. So all in favor of approving the minutes from the December fifteenth, 2021 meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, item number four, which is the presentation of the audit from EKF O'Connor Davies and acceptance of the audit. We do have individuals here that will speak to the financial report and the information.
Oh, thank you. I handed out the presentation. So it's just, these are the highlights and the pages of whatever my comments are, if you want to have a question, or you want to go back and look at it more closely. But I'll just kind of give you the highlights, and be happy to answer any questions. So, you have two, you have two reports, the ACFR, the financial statements, and then the federal and state single audit. The big document is the ACFR, and the smaller one is the single audit.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you. Could you just be louder?
Okay. Is it hearing or understanding? All right. All right, so on page two is the opinion on the financial statements. It's a unmodified or clean opinion, as they say, which is the type of opinion that you are looking for. On pages, what's on, sorry, on pages nine through 11. Starting on page 12 is the management discussion analysis. This is a good executive summary of the major things that occurred during the year, and some of the changes as compared to prior year. So I recommend everybody read that, because it is a good overview of last fiscal year. So some of the sections, the financial highlights, talk about the highlights of the government-wide financials, which is the accrual base, and the fund financials, which are the financials that you use to manage every day. Discussion general fund, significant budgetary highlights. So some of the, any transfers or budgetary changes are discussed, as well as the revenues and expenditure activity. Each major fund, it's just a capital fund, so the operating results of that fund. Talks about major capital assets, significant additions, or if there were deletions, are also discussed in that section. And long-term debt, talks about your changes in long-term debt, which last year decreased by 2.4 million. Starting on page 24 exhibits, you know, the GAAP financials, exhibit C and D 24, the Iran assigned fund balance, end of the year at 15.4 million, which is about 20.6%. Prior year was 20.57%, so significant increase. And we'll talk about a good part of that. So your net change in fund balance was the 5.753, and that includes the $2.2 million sale of the school property. So that was a large contributing factor to what your increase was, both operational-wise and your fund balance percentage. There's 60 pages of footnotes. So the one I'm going to highlight that's any little bit different than last year is the prior period adjustment note. Gatsby 84 was implemented for fiduciary funds, so that required a reclassification of student activity funds to be special revenue versus fiduciary. General fund budgetary basis, it's RSI 1A and B. So, start on page 96, revenues were in excess of budget of 3.4 million, again, which includes the 2.2 million sale of the school. Expenditures were under budget by 2.4 million. So that's basically where your $5 million, the 5.7 million increase that I talked about, is a product of both excess revenues and underspending the budget. Pension funds, all the pension funds due to the increase in the market, all the funding percentages increased. So the town fund went from 62% to 73%. The education pension fund went from 74% to 89% funded, and volunteer fire went from about 12% to 17%. So again, all that is market-based, so as long as that, we hold on to those gains, those percentages are, you're going in the right direction. A well-funded plan is normally talked about as being 80% or above. So one of them's a little bit below, and one of them's almost at 90%. So we're in good shape with those two. And the volunteer fire is a newer plan, so that will take some more time. So the opposite impact of that, or the related impact of that, is that your pension liabilities all decreased also, because your percentage funded increased. For OPEB, that's RSI, on page 113, the liability is about 2.9 million. Last year was about 3.2 million. So you did see a decrease in your OPEB, which is your other post-employment benefits, liability, medical, life insurance, those type of things. And for the education plan, the liability ended at 6.6, and that's slightly higher as compared to the 6.4 the prior year. So both your OPEB plans, you have a trust fund, are basically operating as pay-as-you-go right now. You're not really funding them, funding the liability. There are a small amount of assets, but the activity is more pay-as-you-go. Looking at the smaller document, the federal single audit, we had no findings or question costs in any of the programs that we tested for federal purposes. The state's single audit mirrors the federal single audit, and again, we had no findings or question costs in any of the state programs that we tested. I think we did send electronically a communication, those charts were governance. This kind of talks about our responsibilities, you know, that we are independent, and if there were any significant adjustments, which there weren't any. What's coming up, the biggest, the big statement is Gatsby 87 on lease accounting. So that changes all lease accounting. You know, this is filed on the private sector. Oh, they've continued to postpone it. Gatsby has chose not to. This was postponed one year. So next year, any type of lease, what we used to call operating leases now, will be required to be recorded, the asset, and then a liability for what you have to pay to use that asset. So the asset is the right to use, and the liabilities we have to pay for that right. So that'll be new next year, and it won't affect your budget or anything. It'll affect those top statements, the government-wide. Recommendations, which I think we just handed out this morning, but we have no new recommendations. So there's two that were, we left in, just to, that weren't completely addressed. Most of all the recommendations were addressed. So if you look at the second page, you'll see that eight or 10 recommendations we had last year were all addressed by management. So, which we like to see. So that's my overview. Be happy to answer any specific questions anyone has.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Sure.
So if there's no questions, I guess we'll just look for a motion to accept the audit that was presented, as presented, I should say?
Second.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Thank you.
Thank you again. Moving on to item number five, which is the appointments and reappointments. We do not have any for today's meeting, so we will move on to number six, which is the Conservation Committee. Two issues with bylaws, an appointment of Tobias Adler as a student member. Last week, Dennis had a question on the bylaws, just to make sure that everything was in place, and that the student members were addressed in their bylaws. So everybody received a copy of the bylaws. They do address the student member. Section two, page three. So that is addressed in their bylaws. So if nobody has any other further questions, we can just, I guess, accept this, these bylaws?
The bylaws.
So, any further questions on the bylaws that would be perceived?
Yeah. Is there any member here from the commission?
No.
No. I would just suggest that the next time they review it, they change that wording that says they'll make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen for reappointment of this student, and for other vacancies also. They have it listed that they'll make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen. It should be to the Town Council. Other than that, looks good to me.
Okay. Any other comments? So we'll look for a motion to approve the Conservation Committee bylaws with the inclusion of removing Board of Selectmen and including Town Council, when they have members that they would like to recommend to the town.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Just for clarification for Mary, when she's adding it that the recommendation is not to do it immediately, but the next time they review the bylaws, so they don't feel like they need to make that change. The current charter does make allowances for any statement where it says Board of Selectmen, and it's acknowledged that is Town Council. I just don't want them to have to go through the whole charter process, or through the whole bylaws process, just for that change.
No, I agree with you, except that they make a statement here that they review it every year around December. So, that's all I'm just saying. You're right, though. I mean, you know, I don't want them to go to a charter change. But the next time they review it, they should-
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that's-
Make sure they get things going right. Okay.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Thank you.
Now, we'll just move on to the appointments. So we're looking for a motion to appoint Tobias Adler as their student member.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Item number five, which is Public Works Line Item Transfer Request. Everybody has that in their package. Reason for the request is to utilize surplus funds to offset future capital expenditure. They're looking for a, in amount of 31, 83475 for a new account to be added, and then to decrease headquarter generator by the same amount. So do we have a motion to approve the Public Works Line Item Transfer Request?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Yeah. Closeout HQ project and utilized for Station Two. Does this mean they're adding a generator to the station on Glenwood Road? Is that what this is for?
Generator replacement. So the generator for the headquarters came in lower than what was in the budget. And so, we're asking to move the money from this to chip off another one that we would be asking for in future.
Oh, okay. All right. I didn't think there was one up there. So this would be providing that? Okay. All right. And I also don't understand why Todd signed off on this. Why this is DPW, when it says CFD?
Todd's doing the work.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay.
Public Works project. Budget is on the Public Works department.
Okey-dokey.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, thank you. We'll move on now to item number eight. Police Department AFA Project Lifesaver International Grant Award. Do you guys want to speak on that?
Oh, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. First of all, thanks for having us here this morning. Also, congrats on the fine report. The financial report was excellent. A little out of order on a couple of these things, and I do apologize for that. It's not normally that the money's thrown at me the way it's been here at the end of the year. Particularly, this one came through rather quickly. Project Lifesaver is a well-established program throughout the country, which helps us track individuals that have diminished capacity, have a tendency to wander, and basically, you know, whether you're on the autism spectrum, or have other disabilities, which affect cognitive function and wandering. Also, in later years, dementia, senility, a lot of older people will wander. It becomes problematic for us to find them, and it's also a large drain on resources. We have to put a lot of bodies and a lot of manpower on that to go find these individuals, especially when we get into the winter months such as this, where exposure becomes a real issue. So Officer Rekia was able to find a grant through the American Alzheimer's Federation, or Association, excuse me, which will pay for all the equipment. I am instructor, and we have a number of other departments here in the area that are instructors. So we already used the program. Unfortunately, we didn't have the equipment ourselves, so we had to rely on Guilford. We have a couple individuals in town, which are chronic wanderers, so to speak. So acceptance of these funds allows us to go ahead and purchase that, and we will have it readily available, so we can deploy it quickly once something feels missing. We do have a number of individuals that we'd like to sign up to the program here, which we haven't been able to do, because we didn't have the equipment. So it's going to help us operationally a great deal.
Thanks, Chief. Anybody have any other questions?
What is it? You're purchasing?
So, it's basically, it's all technology. It's basically, if you remember the old Mutual Home Hospital thing, though, when he went out with a little radio transmitter and finder. That's basically what it is. And they have different mounts. They have a bracelet mount. Sometimes they put them on shoelaces. It's just a small radio transmitter, and we train individuals. We use the tracker and locate through radio finding, for lack of a better word. You would think, in this day and age, that, you know, with cell phones and all the other things, there would be more modern methods that come out. But really, this is the best one that we have, because people have a tendency to leave their phones. They don't have them. You can't locate them, or chipping them visually, you'd be able to do it better. But at this point, this is the best that we have. So we'll be able to train our people. I can train them right at house, and have a number of individuals ready, ready to go at any point in time. So it's a little bit, it's an older technology, but it's still applicable.
What is the amount of the grant?
$6,000. And also, we received another private donation from the RWC Foundation for $500 to help us maintain the program, which is just basically replacing batteries. You have to replace those batteries with the transmitters. And a lot of times, certain clients, you know, like them, makes them trip them off, and you lose them, so you have to replace them. But it's not, it's not a large expense, but we have a funding stream to pay for the incidentals that'll come along with it downstream.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question, just out of interest. Are you tagging these people?
So basically, it's just a bracelet, or, like I said, sometimes I'll put it on shoelaces. It's different little mounts. It's very small. It's like a small battery, basically about the size of a smaller than a wristwatch. So, and then we have the information. So you would enroll, when we have people out there, their caregiver would enroll them in the program. We know where they live. You know, we know the kinds of things that they want. We know what their triggers are. So it just helps us really coordinate a much more efficient response to finding them. You know, we have a whole background on it. So once that call's in, we can figure out, okay, we know that they normally, when they wander, they like to go to the park over here, or they may go to the train tracks, or they may go to the water. Helps us identify those things, and we know that they don't like flashing lights, or, you know, other things that might trigger them. We can gear our response back for that.
How many people in the community would this be, just out of curiosity?
I mean, right off the bat, I know we have at least 25 people that we could have on right away. We have two, like I said, we have two that are serviced from Guilford because they're really chronic wanderers. And I said, like, I said at the beginning, it takes a lot of resources to actually put on. So when someone goes missing in daylight, when it's 20 degrees or 10 degrees, a lot of times, they just walk out of the house with improper clothing. And we have, everybody that have on scene has to get out there. We have to find them. It's a life safety issue.
All right. Thanks.
Anyone else? All right. Then at this point, we'll look for a suggested motion, which would be the Town Council of the Town of Clinton approves, hereby approves, the receipt of a grant from the Alzheimer's Foundation of America, America's Project Lifesaver Program to streamline search and rescue procedures in order to protect individuals living with dementia-related illnesses.
I'm moved.
A second?
Second.
Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we are on to item number nine, which is the JAG VCP Grant Application. Another one from-
Again, my apologies to the council. This is, I know it's out of order. It's kind of backwards, because we've run into a situation where Officer Rekia has developed a very good relationship with the ODP, and they called up, and they have $25,000 to give us this project. It's a one-time grant offering. And we were going to present this. I've already presented it to my police commission at their November meeting. They were interested. We were actually going to bring in. This is not a new program. There's at least a half a dozen of them placed throughout the state of Connecticut. Currently, we're going to bring them in to actually have them speak and address my commission. But because of the COVID that was running through my building, we had to go virtual. We decided that we're going to move it to, Monday's meeting is going to actually be, we had the dogs here. However, the state grant ran out on December 31. They wanted to give us the money. I said, well, we're not there yet. They said, well, we'll give you an extension. We tried to file it. And so I guess the case would be here, if you would at least approve it, pending, approved, final approval of my commission for Monday. We should probably be able to extend to that Monday date to receive the one-time grant from the state. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. I know this is not a traditional type of program. It does have some, it does have some operational benefits. They're certainly limited. It's not, it's not like a traditional K-9 program, but I think it's keeping us on the leading edge of the way people are wanting us to deliver services nowadays. So it's a de-escalation tool. It's a community engagement tool, and it's an officer wellness tool. So it doesn't function anywhere near a traditional police K-9 program, which we already have well-established. This is a completely different vein. I mean, one's a jet plane, and one's a helicopter. They're two completely different things.
Does anybody have any questions? We have all received, obviously, the spreadsheet.
I've got a million questions.
No problem.
A million. I mean, I've done a lot of, I've done some research on this, and I see that, the last thing, most recent thing I could find, is that there are currently only 19 out of 169 towns in Connecticut that have these dogs, or units, because that includes UConn and Yale University, and those are all privately funded. I see, I just, I just don't see the rationale for this. I mean, I'm reading Officer Rekia's letter, and it says, "The funding will be utilized for the support and expansion of community policing strategies." I don't understand how this is a policing strategy. To me, a strategy defines the way you respond to typical policing situations, not something that is ancillary and off on the side. This doesn't change your strategies. This changes your responses to police activities, as near as I can tell. Also, there's no explanation in here of who will be the person responsible for the dog. And I see in a lot of towns, that it's the animal control officer who keeps the dog in their, in their employ, so that it can be readily available when necessary, because an animal control, well, anyway, but not necessarily assigned with an officer. And that, to me, is where the concerns come in, is there's no explanation of how this will be integrated into the system. And it, to me, it looks as though there's another officer who will be dedicated to maintaining an animal 24/7 for availability. We all know that overtime and having enough feet on the ground at any given time is, is the goal of the, of the police department. And I just see this as a new line item that doesn't, I can't, I see, I don't see the justification in Little Clinton with 12,000 people here. Also, what I read was that the primary, I mean, you know, gathering from the articles I read, the primary function of this dog is for the officers, that the dog is available in the department for decompressing, and if they've had a tough situation and all that, and that it's more for the officers than it is for the community. I mean, I just, I cannot see the, the, I just don't understand why you feel like Clinton, being this small community with, I understand, you're very busy. You deal with a lot of things that no one ever knows about. But to add this as an ongoing line item to your budget for something that I see no justification for. I mean, I read this thoroughly, over and over and over again, and I don't see one sentence in here that says why a therapy dog is needed in Clinton. Nothing. So I have a lot of questions here that are not answered by what you've put here. So, at this point in time, you know, and there's so many things in the stipulation for the grant. Like, the grant is, it looks like it's primarily designed to deal with situations that police officers run into in violent and situations. I mean, they're talking about bulletproof vests, and cruiser equipment, and protective, police protective gear, community policing events, training, and technical assistance. I see nothing in here that talks about kind of an after-the-fact addition to the department. Nothing in here can I stretch to include a comfort therapy dog. Nothing. As a matter of fact, in here, it says that you could use it to buy a car. And I'm thinking, why not use that $25,000 to benefit the taxpayers by saving the budget $25,000, rather than adding a line item to the police budget, as well as taking a patrolman and taking their time away from the job that they were hired to do, and making them an animal maintainer? For what benefit? So I have a lot of questions. A lot, a lot of questions.
Let me try and take it order, because there was a lot to, there was a lot to take in. And obviously, there's a lot of misunderstandings.
I'm surprised there isn't anything in here saying why.
Well, we haven't gotten to that point yet, because they're very specific. The company that donates the dog to the program specifically interviews all the people with us, and figure out who is going to be suited for the handler. Is it going to be a safe- out who is going to be suited for the handler, is it going to be a safe home for them, because they have 7,000 hours invested into the training of the dog before they give it to us. So, we haven't got to that point yet, we will go through the process to find out who is the best handler, who we would decide would be the best handler, and obviously, if it's not going to work, it's not going to work, but we have plenty of qualified people that can handle that. It's not going to be taking away an officer from their duties, it's just an ancillary piece to their duties, so we would have this asset for de-escalation incidents. A lot of times, we run into people, we have a large volume of people here that are cognitively imbalanced, they get very agitated, and to be able to bring this animal in, a lot of times can de-escalate a situation. And this is a policing strategy, it's a very different policing strategy. We live in a very different world post-June 2020. This is a large focus of what everything is moving towards now, is de-escalation and untraditional techniques to approach law enforcement. And my job is to advise everybody, and try and advise you, and advise my commission, guide our agency in the way that I see professional law enforcement moving. So whether we're a community of 12,000, 100,000, or 5,000, it behooves us to bring forward the best practices. A lot of times, things are new, yes, there's only 19, and they are assigned to officers, I don't know where you found that they weren't assigned to officers, where they're assigned to animal control, that would be different to us, from what we understand, they're assigned to officers and ability, and I know two of them very personally, and very well, I know what the program does. So the other piece is the officer wellness piece, and that's another big push that often gets neglected, this has been very difficult two years for, for law enforcement officers. You know, we're villainized, we're demonized, everything we've done is, is second-guessed, and these officers feel a lot of stress. With COVID, we have people out, we're constantly working shifts, they're overworked, so even just the mere fact of that, having it in the building, where it may help some of my officers, is a benefit to me. The third thing about the budget, you can't supplant, I can't take that money and then just buy a car, because all grants basically tell you, you can't supplant your normal fleet with grant money.
It's right in here.
We would use it for that, but I can't use it for a police car to supplant our normal budget, that's standard grant language in pretty much every grant that comes out of JAG. You can't supplant your normal budget with the funding, it has to be earmarked for a purpose. So, the purpose being, if we, we do have other outside donors, just like we do with all of our basically non-traditional programs, I have private donors which will donate to maintaining the costs of these programs, so I understand, I think, I've been here five and a half years, I think I've demonstrated that I run a fiscally responsible agency, providing services that the town needs, I would not put us in, I don't frivolously spend money, I would not put us in a position where I thought that this is going to be a waste of the town's money, the taxpayer's money, I'm a taxpayer just like all of you, I, my stewardship of the tax dollars is important to me, and I think we've demonstrated over the five and a half years that I've been here, that I, that I take that seriously, I don't, I don't frivolously waste money. So, I understand it's a non-traditional program, and I fully understand your questions, and believe it's, it's a narrow divide, but it's at the tip of the spear of where modern law enforcement is being pointed by society, and the things that they want us to do. So, is it 100% needed? No. Is it benefit? Yes. So...
No, I understand that, I understand that, I have no question about that, I just...
My job, again, is just to say, okay, I have an opportunity here to bring a program in, at minimal cost to the taxpayer, which could benefit us in a number of ways. So, if I had the opportunity to do that, that's just the way I mean, I'm more forward meaning, but it's, you know, it's up to you, it's up to my commission to make the financial decisions based on that. I will tell you that I have funding sources that will help offset the cost of this, and it will not impact service delivery on the street, it will improve service delivery, it will not impact it, it will not restrict it.
I have a question, I have a couple, I'll let you answer each of them as we go along. First one, will it be utilized within the schools? Currently, we had some programs where they're bringing therapy dogs into the schools, I know that there's been some challenges maintaining the same dogs, and I know, at least, from what I hear in the community, it's been a huge benefit, so will this be an opportunity for the schools?
I think it would certainly be an opportunity, if we have a traumatic incident, to possibly do that, I would always consult with, with Mary Ann, I think, she and I have a very good working relationship, and the relationship between campuses and our department, so we would certainly work that out, that's an opportunity, again, for us, if there's a traumatic incident there, and again, it's a good de-stress tool, and again, it's a good community outreach tool, in, in those situations where there's larger groups, the dog draws people in, the officer's standing there, they get to talk, they get to converse, it's a positive exchange, and these are the things that I have to keep working on, incident by incident, you know, meeting by meeting.
So, the, the police commission is going to review the grant application as well, and I assume they're going to ultimately draft what the application looks like, is there an opportunity for that vision to come back to the council, so that we make sure that it's still aligned with what you've communicated, and no changes have been made through the police commission?
That, that's basically what they've already reviewed, we've already presented that to, to my commission as well, so that's not really going to change, the only thing would be that we have the opportunity to get the one-time $25,000 grant, however long we can string that out with an extension, I don't know, so that's just, that's the time piece, and I, and I hate to put it, and if it has to, we lose it, we lose it, but if I have an opportunity to get it for a program that my commission's already shown a, a strong interest in, and again, of course, like, I would, it would be much better to have, they already voted on it at the December meeting, and now we're here talking about it, it would have been much cleaner.
Instead of, I understand.
Unfortunately, it's not that way, so I, I understand.
My only other question is, because the funds are not consecutive with our fiscal year, you're going to be getting a dump of funds for the program, but next fiscal year will be coming around six months, how do you anticipate, I know you did mention that you're looking for private donations, I know that with the, the other police dog that we have, there's a lot of additional budgetary constraints with the police dog, and in terms of making sure that doesn't impact both the police budget and the town budget, because we started out with a grant, and then somehow these things start to snowball, are, I just want to make sure you're confident this doesn't become another line item, where potentially we might have reconsidered other resources as opposed to this, just because it was a grant, and, you know, an added benefit as opposed to...
The cost that we're going to go to, obviously, maintaining the program, we're going to be, you know, food for the dog, and healthcare for the dog, and then just whoever the dog is assigned to, may be compensated for watching the dog. But that's it, so, I mean, the, the cost will be minor, I'm sure that I can offset the majority of food costs and the vet costs, just as I do with our K-9 program, our K-9 lineup, it's not a traditional K-9 program, it's a nominal line item, $5,000 a year really covers, you know, you can't keep your pet for that, and we're keeping a working K-9 dog for that, so I'm confident that I have good, solid backing already for the program, I have people dying to give me money for the program, which will continue to give us the well-established programs, and they will continue to give us money to maintain it, so, again, I, I wouldn't enter into something that, again, okay, we got, oh, it's great, we have it, now, again, we're stuck with a $50,000 a year bill, or a $25,000 a year bill, I don't do that, I haven't done it in the past, I won't do it here, it's, if I didn't feel we could maintain the program at a minimal cost, I wouldn't, I wouldn't ask for it, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't see the benefit in it, like I said, because it's a very, it's, it's kind of a narrow window, but if we can keep the cost minimum, to me, the benefit is worth investing in that narrow window, to have that asset, and it has the potential to play, pay big dividends, if we do have a situation where we use it and we use it successfully, everybody can say, okay, we'll see, that really was worth what we spent, because it could have went very bad, where we may have ended up with an offensive shooting, or a use-of-force incident that went bad, and now the town is liable, and we're getting sued, and we're getting bad press, and we're getting all the other things that come along with it. If the potential is there, that we have an asset that may mitigate that, I think that's, that's worth it today's day and age, because we're on a very, we're under the microscope 24/7, and even the most minor police interactions can become monumentally bad. So I, I think that whatever I can do to mitigate those circumstances, and help mitigate the risk against the agency and municipality, I need to explore.
Alright, and then I just have one more question, just so, just going to direct towards Carl. This predates the chief, we did have some issues with our insurer and a previous police dog. Have you consulted our insurance and made sure this is in alignment with what they feel as though our liabilities are? Is there any issue with that?
Your liabilities are driven by your policies and how you're going to deploy the animal, so I think the operating policies are going to be something that I'm keen to see coming out of how the department plans on using it, beyond what we've heard here this morning, so part and parcel with going forward, the program is having the rules and regulations of what you're going to do, how you're going to do it, when that dog's going to get deployed, so that sort of stuff needs to come forward, once the commission gives its blessing to having the program, and that's what I'm looking for, to, to see how it's going to be deployed, you know, it sounds wonderful when you hear the, the statement here, but when you're getting litigation, it's all about those policies and procedures, and those I want to see.
Right, and that's our job, essentially.
Okay, that's, that's the basis of risk.
Alright, thank you.
Does anyone have a question?
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
I have one more question.
Hang on, let's get to other people first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're getting $25,000, what are you going to spend it on?
A what? A vehicle for, for the program.
What?
A vehicle for the program. I'm getting the dog donated too, so the dog's already taken care of.
Well, the dog is, yeah, the dog's free, and you're, so you're, this is, the cost is going to go to another vehicle?
Correct.
A car? Okay.
It didn't allow, we'll spend some of the grant.
Dennis?
Sure, adding a vehicle.
Well, then, that vehicle, after the initial grant, then becomes the responsibility of the town to maintain in future years.
That's correct.
I mean, quite frankly, the only thing I don't like about it is the fact that I would have liked to have had the police commission vet this first, and discussed it, to send it forward to us, putting the cart in front of the, the horse, so to speak, by us approving it, and then it goes back to the police commission, is really not, let me say that, years passed, many times, we've done that, and I thought we were getting away from that type of thing, now that we had a new town council, a new form of government, that we would do things according to the charter, it gets vetted by a commission, and then it comes to the council. Certainly, Carol has many questions, and maybe members of that commission have commission, questions, and then, how should I say this, well, they'll just say, well, council already approved it, so, you know, we'll just approve it. I, I just feel, my honest gut feeling is, if we ask for an extension, or you did, until Monday with the state, I'm sure the state could say, so that the town of Clinton could follow proper procedures, we could do that extension two weeks from now, and let the police commission vet this, as they should, Monday, and then we vote on it two weeks from now. I, I'd feel more comfortable that way, at least, I know that the commission had a chance to get all their questions out, and I'm sure there might be some, maybe there isn't, but as much as Carol has a lot of, there might be other people, I mean, just to, and I'm a supporter of the police, as you know, but just to, like, drop an honest and say, well, I'm sorry, because the grant just, well, I know, but things, things should run a proper pattern, you know how I am, a humble, proper pattern person.
My opening statement was, I do apologize, I understand...
No, I understand that, chief.
And I don't normally get the state calling me saying, I'm going to give you $25,000, you better take the money.
Well, wait a minute, I have another question about that. This, it says here, this grant was selected to match with the town in the amount of $25,000.
It's a non-matching grant.
This is a matching grant?
No, it's not, if you read it, it says it's a non-matching grant, it's a one-time, non-matching grant, so it's confusing language.
Then why does it say that?
It says it up front, you'll see it, it says the grant is not a match, as you read further through.
It's written in Officer Rekia's letter.
You'll see it on the grant application itself, it says it's not, it's a non...
But in your letter, it says matching.
I understand.
They're going to go by the grant application.
How do you change that?
Other questions?
Again, I'm, you know, once we, once we get the vehicle, what I see here is a cost of $7,500 to $10,000 a year for the cost of the K-9, but now what we have also is another vehicle to insure, another vehicle to maintain, I'm wondering if we have fully figured the cost of maintaining this program, which includes the cost of the vehicle, the cost of the individual who is going to be doing it while they're doing this service dog routine, and not as a patrolman, to make sure that we fully understand additional costs to the town, and if in fact, we have 10 private donors that are going to pay for this, and if not, we, we have to expect that it may be an increase in a budget, and it'd be good for us to understand how much of that increase is, is going to be there, and we can anticipate seeing it, and approve this with that in mind. That make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyone else? So it seems like the...
Is this something that we can, if they can come back and say, okay, this is the full-blown cost of maintaining this program, and let's hope it does work, I...
Yeah, I'm certainly not against the program.
I'm not against the program, but I want to make sure that we understand what it's going to cost the town to maintain this program, including not just the dog, but the cost of the officer, the cost of the vehicle, the cost of overhead insurance, if necessary, and we can see that when the budget times comes. Is that something we can do?
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, I can't get it done, more than likely, I can't get it done at a timeframe that the grant is going to be available, but that's, I can do it.
Well, could we possibly go back to the, to the, to the state and say, listen, this is what, we're, we're inclined to, to pursue this, but this is what we need?
No, understood, it's just that, that grant window closed on December 31st of 2021, so we're already at an extended time limit.
Understood.
They, they may say yes, I don't know, I can't give you that answer until I talk to them.
Okay.
Anyone else? So, I guess it's up to the commission on how we would like to proceed, so, that's kind of where we are at right now. So, it's in our hands, we waiting for the police commission to come back with a, with a recommendation to us, approving the grant now, I mean, that's, that's, those are basically the two options that we have right now.
Sounds like we need to wait.
Yeah, there's a lot of information that we need to have.
No, I, I fully understand.
Table? So we'll look for motion to table this until we get feedback from the police commission.
Yeah, I, I want to make sure that you understand what we're looking for is, obviously, the economics involved.
I fully understand, sir, I'm not, like I said, I would never come to you and not have all these standard features available, just because the timing of us, the state wanted to give me the extra money, and it's usually telling me, come on, we're going to give you this money, we're going to give you this money, we had to get in front of somebody to accept it, I don't have all the particulars, because we're not there yet, so I, I fully understand, I, I know exactly what you want, and it should be projected as normal fiscal practice.
So, we have a motion to...
I'll motion to table.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion?
No. I'll get ready for the vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Next, on the item, number 10, is that council discussions for future projects and correspondence, any discussions at this point, that people would like to have related to either of those items?
I would like to, since we have, our next meeting together will be the, before the public hearing, I have a question about, what will we be able to give to those who come here from small businesses, or seniors, for instance, when they ask us, how do I apply? Will we have that sorted out, Carl? Or will it have to be dragged on a bit further?
Well, the public hearing doesn't mean you have the authority to spend, you then need to convene...
No, but they're questions, they're questions, right, right, right.
So we're not going to be in a position to take applications or process anything until after the town meeting is actually formally acted, to legally authorize those dollars to be committed, so...
And that's after the public hearing, the public meeting comes later, correct?
Correct, so there's a two-step process here, public hearing to get public input on the plan, and then actual action to appropriate dollars, so you have authorization to spend. We're not going to be doing anything with anybody until after the town meeting has approved those dollars and authorized them to be spent. Programs are somewhat simple, and they mirror things that we already have in place over in human services, this is a matter of making it a senior-specific track, it's still going to have the same vetting mechanisms that they have over there. The businesses, I've got it fleshed out...
The businesses, I've got it fleshed out, it's easy enough to reduce it to writing, once we have legal authorization to spend those dollars. So, you just have to get to the point of actually going through the hoops, dotting the i's and crossing the t's before you're spending any money.
So at the public hearing, I presume that you will present what you presented to us in the workshop, to the public?
It would be essentially the same thing, as I said during the workshop, I would give the higher-level review of the spending buckets, and then, that'd be the only difference between what I gave you in workshop versus what we'll have at the public hearing, is detail on the spreadsheet, and that's it. Otherwise, you still have to give the public the same understanding of what the program is, the same understanding of what's eligible, what's ineligible, and the path that we're on.
Has that been posted yet, that information?
The public hearing information has been put out there.
I mean, the notice of the public hearing is out there, correct? Are those details, what you just described, are those available to, out there somewhere?
The PowerPoint out there, no.
Well, I mean, for me, there, I, I took what you had, and I summarized it, I cut out the parts that aren't applicable and stuff, and I was gonna send it to the party I'm affiliated with, so that they had a general understanding, and then I thought, "Well, sometimes it just opens Pandora's box," so I didn't send it out. But I would like people to be informed and come to the meeting and understand why we made the decisions we made, and, and what the benefits are of the decisions that we made. So I would love it if we had-
I did a summary sheet to be able to go out, in advance of the public hearing, for the macro buckets of where the dollars are gonna go. The full extent of the detail and multiple pages of a PowerPoint-
No.
Are not something I'm gonna put in the ad in the paper.
No, 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 I'm not talking about that, just a summary, yeah.
And how many days between the public hearing and the public meeting? That's designated by the charter, right? Is it 10 days or something? Okay, so that-
Charter lays out the process to pull a public, a special-
Okay, all right.
-town meeting. You just have to go through the process.
Yep, yep, I'm just trying to understand the process, good to know, good to know it's moving.
I'm kinda anxious to see what level of participation the town's gonna give.
This is why I wanna tell people. I do tell people, I hope that's okay.
Well, it's, it's important to make people aware that it's happening, I'm just curious how many people say, "Yeah, I'm gonna be there." They're not gonna be there.
Well, you know, when it comes to money-
I hear you.
Can we just do a press, you know, through the town website, just issue, and people can follow the link?
I've already given a series of answers to our reporter for a story he was working on, so, I think the matter of saying the wheels in motion for a PR machine back in December, when we last met to discuss this, was probably premature for a public hearing that's gonna take place middle of January. I want people to be aware of it going into the public hearing, not when you decide it, so then wait a month for them to remember to come. We'll start pushing those posts out, obviously, probably by the end of this week, so that people, and then just keep sharing and posting them, and again, we'll see what happens. So hopefully people will show. Anyone else?
I have a question, this past week, and I guess it was, over the testing, and all the information that you put out on the town website, people needed to be signed up to get that information. May I ask, how many people are signed up?
About 2,700.
2,700. Is there any way that we might be able to get that number up? What might we be able to do to get the residents to realize that signing up is probably pretty important these days?
I don't think you can, well-
Well, we can't make them, but can we make it more public, that this is something-
Quite honestly, I, I don't know how much more public we could make it.
Okay.
Mary, myself, Mike Neff, we spent probably the past week doing nothing-
No, 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 I don't question that, it's how many people have signed up for the alerts? And you say 2,700 people have signed up? I'm sorry, not the test.
Okay, so-
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, yeah, yeah.
I don't know that, I don't know that number.
Is it a good percentage of the population?
No.
Because that's what I think would be something that we might be able to work on, if possible, to get people to know that these alerts are, I mean, I know it's been going on for a while now.
Isn't it on the sign, sign up for Connecticut alerts? It's, I don't know what more-
It's on our sign, it's on our, obviously, website, I mean, you can't-
Good to be one of those news bullets.
How do you go about, for making somebody, you're telling, I mean, we, we kind of put everything out there, I mean, this testing process that we've been through has been beneficial to that as well, because we've allowed and been able to tell people who say, "Well, I don't get anything," well, then go sign up for CT alerts.
Well, I'm all for signing up, I'm just wondering how to get more people to do it.
It's like anything, I mean, you can't really force, I mean, you can put the information out there, they're the ones that gotta make the move. I mean, I don't know, I mean, there's really not much more you can do, other than put the information out there so that people understand, it is available, here it is for you to use, other than that, I, I don't know what else we could do.
And just to clarify, you're talking about CT alert, you're not talking about the town email system where you sign up? Because there's two different notifications going out?
I'm talking about what it was that people needed to have signed up for in order to get the message, about whether it be the testing, or anything important these days, whether-
Yeah, I think it was both then, because there's two different types of correspondence going out through.
The more the matter.
We're posting everything on Facebook, we're posting everything on the town's website, then you have CT alerts, all of that is also communicated on the electronic sign out there. People have to take an affirmative action and actually do it.
Right.
We're putting it out there, we're now duplicating the information, putting it out under two vehicles, which was the stated platform of how we wanted to do things in town. And to still have this as a question means people are not choosing to find value in signing up for either the alert system, or they're not finding value in checking the town's Facebook page. Anyone else?
We do tell people, when they call, when they say that they haven't received anything, that you should go on the town's website and have an account and sign up to receive alerts.
Yeah. I'm, I'm not in any way criticizing, I'm just wishing, or thinking, or hoping of a way that we could reach people that we haven't reached, because I know you must have gotten a lot of phone calls, considering how many I got.
A lot.
Yeah, right, and of course, we don't want that, we'd rather have people already-
I mean, again, I, I was gonna discuss in under chairman's reports, but I mean, this whole testing thing, you know, that we went through, you know, the struggle is, you put the information out there, I mean, we did a 911 reverse call, we did posts on Facebook, we did everything we could imagine, that you could imagine we could have done, in order to get the information out, but you're still gonna get the people that say, "Well, I didn't get it, and I didn't hear it, and I didn't," so that will never go away. That problem, that'll never get fixed. I mean, there is no way imaginable to fix that problem, because people have to take the authority and, you know, to do something, and that's on them, that's not on us. We can put the information out there, that's on them, to step up and to go and sign up for the alerts, and to check your messages. I mean, I did one specific call, well, you didn't send any info out, we sent out a 911 reverse call. "Oh, well, I don't really, don't answer my phone a lot." Not my problem, I'm sorry. But I mean, so you get all those answers from people. I mean, the, the calls, the texts, the emails, you can't solve the problem. And I think we've done an outstanding job with the information that we put out to this town, and I don't think anybody here has to apologize for that.
No, no, Chris, I'm not in any way going there-
No, no, I'm just saying, in general, I mean, we're doing what we should be doing as a town. It's, I mean, I understand your question, how do we get these people? I don't know.
Right, okay.
I don't know.
Okay. Carl, is this a problem in other towns? Is this just typical? This is-
This is typical and unique to just this testing program. So let's go back through the history of the testing program. This got thrown at every municipality the Monday after Christmas. We were, it was thrown at us in a, in a call with the governor's office. We were told not to say anything to the media, apparently, the administration had been talking about it before Christmas, no information was given to municipalities until that Monday. Two hours after the call with municipalities, there's a press conference, that press conference is committing municipalities to delivering them on the 30th, they're setting up the timetables for us, even though it was thrown at us to come up with a plan. Then we had a call on Wednesday telling us the tests were not in fact coming in. So, the entire program has been shifting, and moving, and evolving as time has gone on, we have tried to respond as best as we can, every municipality is struggling to try and respond to this program, because expectations are very high, demand for tests are through the roof, the number of tests you got were not what was originally promised, and then even if you got what was originally promised, it stills insufficient to meet local demand. So, you get the word out, that's great, I still don't have enough tests to meet local demand. The demand is far in excess of what we actually got, and that's duplicated across every municipality in this state, is that some small amount of tests got through, not enough to meet local demand, demand is through the roof, there's very limited testing capacity, if Hammond Asset reopened as a testing facility, that would be super helpful. Instead of having to tell people, "You can go to Old Saybrook, you can go to Niantic, you can keep going down the road to Bridgeport, or to Branford," I mean, you're sending people a pretty significant distance just to get a test, and we're trying to respond to a program that's constantly evolving and not delivering what was originally stated. So it's been a significant challenge, trying to pull off a program with no notice, then having the terms dictated to us through a press conference, and then it doesn't even get delivered on that end. So it's a little bit of a challenge.
I sense your frustration.
Well, the message, I think, as, as council members, people are gonna ask you questions, people are going to have questions, so then it's up to us then, as council members as well, to sit there and say, "This is where you need to go."
Yes.
I mean, the question is, well, what do I do? Where do I go? You tell them exactly where to go. And then again, at that point, that's on them. So then if you choose not to do it, and, or whatever it may be, then that's on them. So, I mean, I think we're doing that job, and, you know, we continue to give that message to the public, so that's the best we could do, I think, on that end.
Yeah, and that message getting out is better for Mary and Carl, too, to not have to answer all the phone calls, so, I understand.
Anyone else? Nope, good. All right, moving on to chairman's report, so obviously, the hotbed topic, apparently everybody said we're giving out test kits.
I didn't hear.
No? Sean? So it has been, obviously, you just heard Carl, and that is exactly kind of what's been thrust to us. You know, the big thank yous go to Mike Neff, the emergency management director, who was, who put together the calls that he would get, obviously, he was sending me pictures of him sitting in the fire department parking lot, waiting for tests to be delivered, and when the tests finally were delivered, within a couple hours, he had his plan in place. You know, so, the thank you and all the work that he's done, and Mary, and the calls that she's been fielding, from people as related to this, I think this town has done an outstanding job on how we've maintained this, and if you look at other towns, which is what everybody seems to like to do, you know, I, I think that's what people need to do, you know, direct them to the towns that had, you know, car lines that were out to Route 1, and circling buildings, and people that couldn't get tests. You know, we've done our best to do what we needed to do, you know, with this crisis, and the bottom line is, there's way more people that need the tests than we have, and that we cannot control. So, continue to monitor it, we, you know, the state will continue to send messages, and Carl will be on these calls, we'll, you know, decide at some point, hopefully, to send out some more tests, and we'll continue to do the distribution, you know, and pickups when we can, when these tests come in. So, you know, patience, obviously, is what everybody needs, but I know it's, people are thin on patience, because everybody feels they need a test, everybody feels they're sick, and then this is, it's becoming a real struggle, and it's, and it's, you know, something that we all just kinda need to step back and take a deep breath and say, "Listen, you know what, you know, we'll all get through it, but we all need to work together with it." So the message has to be the same message, you know, that the town's working and doing the best they can. But again, what this town has done for these delivery of kits that we've gotten so far, I mean, I don't think there's anyone close to how we've handled it. So, Michael had come up with this process of having people register, which, surrounding towns were like, "Just show up and get a test." Well, he's like, "Let's get a Google Doc form out." I said to Mary, I'm like, "Oh boy, I don't know about that," because then I think that would delay things, but quite honestly, best decision that was ever made. So, it's Mike Neff that's put this program together, and it's everybody else that's just helping him, the fire department, they're there, without fail. The fire department shows up and helps and does whatever they need to do in order to hand out these deliveries, and it's outstanding, the way they handled it was absolutely, you know, bar none, so, a big thank you goes out to them for all that. That is my chairman's report, we will now move on to the town manager's report.
You have the written reports, I attached to that, the analysis provided by Standard and Poor's, rating our debt in advance of the bond anticipation note and bond sale, which we will be having tomorrow. Our bond rating was preserved, which is a positive note, if you've read it, you'll see that there is some positive news in terms of what Clinton is doing, and how they view us as a municipal credit risk, so it's all, there's a lot of positive stuff about what the community is doing in, in the S&amp;P report, and that's acknowledged in our, preserving our bond rating. Budget season is gearing up to get in full swing, budget ask, budget submitters have put their data in, budget reviews will take place later this month, capital information is still flowing in, because we're having problems with vendors being able to give us realistic numbers that we can rely on, six months out from today, and apparently that's, that's a challenge for people to be able to at least commit to pricing that far out. The council will have to make a decision on dates for when you wanna have your budget workshops and work through the budget, that's typically taking place in February, so we can circulate dates at a future time, in order to see what works on your calendars, to schedule a series of meetings to work through the budget, page by page. The town's affordable housing plan, which is part of the council of governments' housing study, I've asked the Planning and Zoning Commission in EDC to give me one to two members to participate in a committee, that would work with the COGS consultants to figure out the direction of the town's affordable housing plan. As I noted previously, having some feedback and participation from the council would be helpful, so if there were one or two council members that wanted to participate in the town's affordable housing plan, at least laying out some of the broad stroke, that would be helpful. Ultimately, we'll have to come back to this body anyways to approve it, before we send it up to the state and respond to the mandate that we've been given. Regional housing plan, we'll have a virtual meeting on January 24th at 7:00 PM. QR code, if you're so interested, but if you go to the COGS website, you can get the link to pre-register, and then participate in the meeting to get additional information on some of the statistics that they've compiled for housing need and housing demographics in, in our region. The only other item to add is an interesting phone call I had yesterday with Department of Energy and Environmental Protection and Ducks Unlimited. The state has an interest in habitat restoration along the Hammock River on the other side of Beach Park Road Bridge, there are tide gates there now, they have an interest in replacing the current tide gates with self-regulating tide gates, but the opportunity now exists through the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation to apply for a rather significant grant, which could replace the Beach Park Road Bridge, increase the span, which would help with coastal resiliency in high water events, it would also lead to habitat restoration on the marsh to the north, because the water could flow out along tidal action, which it currently does not. The grant would be for $5 million, there would be no involvement from the town financially to replace one of our bridges, and the bridge is over 50 years old, and is on a state list for replacement, so this would be a good way to address some of our infrastructure, without having to go to bonding, or putting our own dollars into it. All we would need to do would be support a grant that Ducks Unlimited would submit to National Fish and Wildlife, DEEP would participate in the grant writing process, and then we would need to work on what our relationship with Ducks Unlimited would be for whether they would actually execute the project, or whether the town would execute the project, and they would simply provide the funding.
They want a duck sign right at the beginning.
Cash flow, Ducks Unlimited has deep enough pockets where, if the town plays the lead on the construction side of it, we submit invoices for reimbursement, there's no lag and delay like we've had with other state and federal programs, Ducks Unlimited cuts us a check, we get reimbursed immediately, and then they chase, in this case, National Fish and Wildlife, to get their reimbursement back for, for what they fronted to us. So, it seems as if it's a win-win with little, little or no risk to the town. The grant needs to be in by February 3rd, the team will be working on the grant application, and circulate that later this month. All they need from the town, really, is a letter of, a letter of- later this month. All they need from the town really is a letter of, a letter of support and interest in participating in the program. DEEP will be participating in the program. If we do the larger project financially, they have about $100,000 to deal with the self-regulating floodgates. That would go into the pot of funds for the project. So DEEP would be in as a partner as well as financially. Ducks Unlimited would be the bridge to help make things happen and work in a process that's perhaps smoother than dealing with DEEP. And the town would just, would simply be the beneficiary of this unique relationship.
Great. That aligns with our natural hazards mitigation plan as well, which...
Correct.
knocks a big tick off that.
So that helps with coastal resiliency in a big way by improving the clearance on that bridge.
Do you need a motion to draft that letter and proceed, or you can just do it?
I was just looking for some support that the council is interested in this.
Done, done.
And if you're interested, I will keep the wheels moving.
Yep.
Now, the $5 million is for a new bridge. It has nothing to do with any of the other mosquito control or any of that on the Hammock.
It would just be addressing the bridge span. It does not, at present, the bridge span is kind of small. So the upper reach of the Hammock River does not discharge adequately during low tide events, which means you're losing some of that marshland.
Right.
So the state's interested for habitat restoration. That's why Ducks Unlimited is interested on habitat restoration. In order to get that water flow, you need the wider, the wider span on the bridge, which also helps with high water events and coastal resiliency. So there's a flood angle, which is beneficial to us. There's an environmental angle, which is why DEEP and Ducks Unlimited are interested. And from a budgetary standpoint, if the partnership works and the grant is successful, we get to check off a bridge that we would have to address and then go from there.
Are you feeling the support?
Yep.
I'm making due note of it right now.
Carl, if I can interrupt you, just going back, as you jumped right from housing plan. I would be interested in the participating in the housing plan.
Any questions for Carl?
Anyone else or just Christine?
I'll do it.
Okay. All right. And then once I hear from P&amp;Z, who I think are gonna be picking somebody this week or next, then you'll hear from me to schedule a meeting with the COGS folks.
Thank you.
That's it.
Any questions? All right. Number 13, town council committee liaison reports. Does anybody have an in their report?
Didn't have a meeting.
No, no, no.
No meetings.
Excellent. 14, motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Christine, thank you.